Welcome all to this, rather quickly, Infrastructure Services Committee. First of all, welcome to the room, who's our new General Manager of Infrastructure and Networks, now said you're on board. Who's met up is apologies, apologies been received from Councillor Pete, I'll move that from Chair, seconded, thank you Erin. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. Confirmation of the agenda? I'll confirm the agenda, seconded, thank you. Councillor Sains? Any discussion? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried. Declaration of interest, just noting. And the one item of the agenda of the significance, the Urban Cycleway Fund. Welcome Sarah and Jeanne, well done on getting the money. And I know a lot of hard work we've been doing to getting the information up quickly to the Government for that grant to be made. If you'd like to make any comments about that.
So the report lists projects that this money could be used to fund. The projects aren't new projects, they're ones that were previously signed off by the committee on the 24th of July 2014, or not signed off but presented to the committee when we presented the different network options. So happy to take any questions.
Luke?
I was wondering why it is that these particular cycleway projects receive this funding? And who made the decision?
So as part of the submission we put forward to the NZTA outlining what our current Southend End Cycle Network Programme was, we'd indicated that within that programme that we'd changed back in July last year, that there was other projects that were originally part of that programme that had been removed, and that they could potentially be brought back in to help complement the existing approved network.
Was the government's funding specifically earmarked only for the Southend End Programme? Or could it, for instance, have been used to do something about the very dangerous cycle situation at the Sawyers Bay rail bridge where there's a real bottleneck there? And I would have thought more of a safety issue that I would have preferred to have seen that funding go to there. Was it earmarked by government specifically to go to Southend End?
Yes it was. It was through that the, our existing cycleway programme was the Southend End Network. So this is in essence a cycling and walking additional funding for that sort of work category. So it's earmarked for those types of projects. By the sounds of what you described in terms of the issue at Sawyers Bay, it's more of a safety improvement project, which would be a separate consideration.
Thank you. Hello?
I was a bit confused about this coming to the agenda because it seemed to me that we'd sort of made the decision, which has been released in the media, as something we're already doing.
Is that what, is that the question?
The question is how we're now making a decision when we've already told the newspaper that the decision has been made.
I think there's two parts to that, if I can assist. The first part is that this is consistent with the strategy we had in the development. It was then taken off in order to, because we ran out of funding. It was then, the opportunity came through the Urban Cycleway budget, which needed to have a strategy to work to. So the application was made to do what could be done in this financial year, which was stuff that was already planned, projects already planned. These projects had already been planned, the funding was available, and therefore it was put in to fill that gap. The next issue is not making a statement about it when the government's just given $570,000. It's generally seen as good manners to acknowledge receiving the funding. This is coming back on our table now because we had taken it off at a previous infrastructure meeting, but now that we've got the funding, we're putting it back on. It's a very difficult process because the government's changed the rules and made the opportunity available for the money in a very short, a relatively short time.
I think that's...
That's correct.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't questioning why this group of things or that it wasn't appropriate to pick up government money or any of those things. What was confusing me was that we've got a press release saying this funding will be used to do these things, and we're now making a decision to use this funding to do these things. So what I'm saying is, it looks to me like the decision's sort of already been made, which seems to me, if it was something that could be made internally, then why is it coming to this committee? And if it wasn't, why are we saying we were doing it?
Because it's consistent with the strategy we had, but we had, this committee had taken it off when we left the funding. So it just needed us to go through that process to tick it off. If we didn't have these projects, we wouldn't be applying for any of the funds because we didn't have any projects ready to go in this financial year.
So are we noting that this is something that we're doing? Because that's, we've already said we're doing it?
No, we've, we've taken it off because we didn't have the funding. This is just adopting the revised, i.e. going back to what we could, we had planned now that we've got the funding. If you'd like to respond.
Just to be clear, we have reviewed the wording of the press release and the staff to acknowledge the... Oh. Can you, is, can everybody hear now? I managed to shut off. We have reviewed the wording on the press release and the staff have acknowledged the use of the word 'will' as opposed to the use of the word 'may', and we apologise for that, for that use. However, I can certainly confirm that it's not their practice of staff to pre-empt any decision-making by the council.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I'm wondering whether the thing that we've been given in our agenda today is an updated version of the thing that did come out in the paper, because they're slightly different?
Sorry. I'm not aware of any differences. If there are any differences, it may just be in how they're portrayed, because the government had their own graphic artists and, and obviously we have people who we use as well, so I think that's probably, if there's any, if there appears to be any differences, that's probably why.
So I think it's just that they've suggested some extra things that we haven't got, so maybe the money didn't go quite as far as we'd thought, is that...
I'll double check that. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, Jeanne, is there more that we can do to let the residents or ratepayers know what we're doing? I know that we certainly can't just demand, and I'm not being critical of the consultation that's taken place, but there are still, many people that I speak to have been critical of our spending on cycleways per se. But when you explain it to them, and I'm particularly pleased with the newspaper here, that some of the funds is going to improve the connectivity between some of the schools, it's going to improve the access to cycleways for schoolchildren, which was essentially why I supported these, this particular area to be, to have the cycleways. Is there more we can do to show people on a regular basis that this is what we're doing? It's not good enough in my view, just to have a map that we publish every now and again. We all know what's going on, but there is still that criticism there, and in my view, people don't understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, and we need to do a bit more so. Is there something that we can do to do it more so?
Yes, I think there is. We've certainly been challenged, I suppose, in the past 24 months in the implementation of this, and there's been some timeframes between the initial consultation and the actual construction of some of the projects. So yes, in short, yes, we can do better, and at the moment we are thinking about our next three years programme of how we can improve the implementation of that, how we can line up our communications a bit better, et cetera. But I would also like to suggest that in the last 12 months, with the work that's been undertaken by staff, that there has also been an improvement in the communications and the liaison we're doing with the residents, effective residents, et cetera. An example of that is that we are putting a lot more signage up, physical signage on some of the sites out on the ground, and we're running a lot more sessions with residents for consultation than we had done in the past.
Thank you.
Richard?
My question's just around the, we haven't locked to, that's right, we haven't locked to revisit the Victoria Road situation, and I don't know whether that's because of just that any alternative ways of dealing with it than the one that was originally proposed would be financially just way outside of this envelope, or whether it was just because it was too difficult. I just, you know, we're making that bit between Coffrey Street and Victoria Road, we're proving that, but the reality is that certainly the recreational cyclists for whom this area is a destination. Cootree? I was brought up differently. They're just going to sail straight down Victoria Road anyway, they're not going to hang a right and come up Cootree?
When, when that, I suppose that section was originally in the original network plan and then was removed through the decision made in July last year, there was two reasons really, it was around availability of budget, and it was complicated to deal with, and there was also other considerations around, around the reserve area and that alternative route, and it's anticipated over time we'll work through what might be achieved in that area.
If I can assist there, having gone to several of the meetings in that area, some of the suggestions were that a speed limit review in that area may actually...
I think the quiet street, I may not be using the technically correct term, but a, something that would result in the traffic slowing down through there.
Yeah, so that along Victoria Road may have been a solution. So that, this is just the work to end in this financial year, it doesn't mean it's the end of the work in the area.
Thank you.
Okay, you've come in, but, Jinti?
Thank you, just to follow on from that question, I guess. When I look at this, the list of costs here, we have $30,000 to remove a traffic signal mast at the Hillside Andersons Bay intersection, and $40,000 which seems to be for the relocation of two power poles. To me, I'm questioning whether or not that ought to be cycleway budget, or whether or not that should sit with another, so for example, the relocation of the traffic signal mast, would that not be a minor improvements budget? And the two power poles, would that not be a cost that would be to sit with Delta or some other agency?
No, both, both of those projects, the need for them is because we're putting shared paths in those locations, and the mast arm at Hillside Andersons Bay Road creates a pinch point where the shared path narrows to about a metre, and so part of the cost of moving the mast arm is also to build out the curb slightly, which is being funded through a minor improvements project. But the minor improvements project wouldn't pick up the cost of moving the mast arm because the driver for that is the cycleway project. The other one that you talked about, that's number three, it's a similar situation, it's very, it would be a very narrow path, which was within the network option two that was signed off, would be about a metre wide next to a white wall on one side, so it's very constrained. And again, this would be to build out the curb, so the cost is not just for relocating the power poles, it's also to build out the curb so the power poles have somewhere to go, and so that we can achieve closer to two and a half metres width there.
I'm, yeah, I'm not questioning the validity of the project at all. What I'm, what I'm curious about is where the cost sits and the reason for that. I guess I'm just seeking to understand the piece of land which, for example, number four is, is it four? No, number three, the power poles, do they just, do they have a right to occupy that space? Ie, I assume it's either carriageway or footpath that power poles happen to be in. Are we, do they have an easement through there was something which says you will be able to have your power poles here in perpetuity regardless of the use or changing use of this particular piece of carriageway?
Yes, I believe it's generally enshrined in various legislations where there's access rights to the road corridor for utilities such as telecom, power, et cetera, and in this situation, these poles may have been there for a long time, so there's, if there is a desire for us to move them, then that's a cost that we would bear. And in some cases, I understand you can have negotiations with the utility operator because they may have plans also to move them, or there may be benefits for them moving, which in some cases could be a cost-sharing exercise. But in this case, it's very much driven by ourselves.
If I could just add that I can understand that it's attractive sometimes when you're dealing with project funding to think about the work that's required rather than the outcome that is being delivered. And whilst we might like to think that there are other areas that could potentially fund some of the work so that we get a greater bang for our buck in terms of the cycleway funding, the reality is that that is only going to cause you a domino effect in terms of what are you not going to do because you're going to have to fund the removal of the power poles, et cetera. And I'm sure that the government would reduce the money available rather than provide us more for cycleways, unfortunately.
Yeah, I guess the, the reason it followed on from Councillor Thompson's question is because I think there are parts of this network which we quite clearly aren't currently funding, which were in the original network, and which have, I think, a really appropriate call on funds. So whilst I appreciate that cost shifting between, for example, minor improvements and any other budget may not be a cost saving to the DCC, cost shifting between us and another entity or another utility certainly would be. So that's where my questions come from. Thank you.
I see that the bit along Forbury Road is intended to lose about 20 car parks, and that there's a variety of plans for other car parks to replace those or other, other things to do, and we haven't yet finished our consultation on that. What happens if people find it unpalatable or they don't want us to do that? Does that mean that we've approved doing it and, or are we approving today consulting on it and then coming back to decide whether there might not be another way? I'm just seeing that Forbury Road is sort of like Victoria Road, in fact, it's the same corner, and the same people are likely to be concerned about losing 20 car parks in that area.
So I'll just clarify how we see the decision process unfolding. So generally, the process that we're taking in the past is that the committee signs off on the network, so in Forbury Road case, there is no change to the network, it's more of an enhancement as such, so that was the network that was previously approved. However, should, when we go through the consultation process and find that, if we take a scenario where there was considerable concern at what was proposed around either the network and all the facility design, if it was a, an issue that was so compelling that it was desirable not to have the network there, then we'll be bringing that back to the committee to decide, there would be no doubt about that. But generally, if there's a facility or a design change as a result of consultation, we would interface with this com-chair to decide what is the most appropriate decision process for that. So in the range of things, if it was a relatively low level concern, there may be an ability to make a decision at this com-chair and office level, but if it's a sensitive or complicated concern that's raised that does change things a bit more dramatically, then we'll take advice on that.
Thanks, Jeanne. Richard? Oh, you had to put your head over there. So John, so John, apologies.
Jeanne, given that with, and I'm very happy with the, with the criteria you've set for, in the recommendations here, but having said that, there were two or three public meetings with regards to the stretch from Victoria Road through to Sinclair Beach, or Forbury Road if you like, and then there was the idea of going down the track that was alongside the beach. Nothing's been done about that as yet, I understand all of that, but however, when does that come back up for reconsideration? So that's still on the planes?
It's currently not on the planes in terms of the Southend End Cycle Network per se, which tends to be focused more on the on-road network, but I think we, we got to previously that there, once the, I understand in terms of the reserve side, but the issue was more along the certainty around the sand dunes and that track there, and it's an area that we haven't pursued in terms of a cycle network conversation, we haven't been directly leading that, but it's, I can't confirm when that conversation would reignite at this stage, but we can check that out and get back to you.
Yeah, well, there is a lot of public interest in what's going to happen there, so I would certainly like to know what your thoughts are for the long term, because it's not going to go away.
As I mentioned before, there was a suggestion quite keenly adopted by almost, I think, possibly 100% of people who turned up to the meetings that I went to, that a speed limit review would actually act as something that would potentially be the solution in that area. So that's something that may be looked at rather than actually a cycleway. It may not be ideal, but given the very constrained winds of the street there...
Yeah, I understand that, it almost got in the too hot basket, or too large basket, and I guess that's where it still sits.
So share, share, share as we were considered, possibly being something to consider, but that requires a speed limit review change, so we're waiting for the government to change the speed limit review method, and then we might be at a point to be able to deal with it. Erin?
Thank you. And I'm glad that we received this funding. The quantum of funding we received, is that higher or lower than you were anticipating receiving?
We didn't really have any expectations as to what level we might be receiving through the Urban Cycleway Fund. There was $10 million available. We believe that our submission was reasonably sound and demonstrated where we're at in terms of pro-grip development and our maturity as, as we roll out these, these networks. But it would be fair to say also that other roading authorities, I think there's five other ones from Emery across New Zealand, have got a reasonable share of that money as well, particularly up north. But I feel we're able to reflect on the balance of that allocation, we think we're very pleased with how it's turned out.
Because as you suggest, other, while we've been, we've been successful, other authorities have been more successful in receiving funding, will there be any opportunity to get broader feedback from the ministry as to how we could better on future rounds to increase that quantum?
We will be doing our best to make sure we get our fair share. There is groups being pulled together by the NZTA, which does bring all the roading authorities and the, and the groups and the staff at NZTA level which are coordinating this process, so we will be able to learn and share from that and improve our practices to help secure our fair share of the money.
And just finally, I mean, as you say, this was a quick turnaround project, do we know when the next round will be, so that we have longer to prepare for that?
Yes, we're doing, we're working on that now. What's, this first year was slightly different to what will happen with the next three years, but in generally, in general, the next three years processes we're putting forward now, submission, it's sort of outlining our cycleways programme, very much in line with what was discussed at the long-term plan process, and that was submitted last week. But that just gives the NZTA a sense of what our programme is, and then the process that's applied thereafter, it's very much runs in parallel with the NLTV process, which is the National Air and Transport Programme, so there's considerations of the money that comes from that bucket for cycling, plus also the urban cycleway, so they run in parallel.
Thanks.
Andrew?
Jeanne, just to follow up on Hillary's comments about the parking on Forbury Road, if we're looking at the quiet streets and looking at what's happened along Victoria Road already, would the parking not be able to be retained?
Generally, there's some parking loss on a quiet street because the way that they remain quiet is by providing some build-outs and some crossing points, and each one normally impacts on two or three parking spaces on each side of the road, so even with a quiet street, there's normally some parking loss. I just need to correct the numbers that were provided to Councillor Calvert yesterday, it's actually 12 parking spaces that are estimated to be lost on Forbury Road, not 20 as was estimated yesterday.
Good. And just to follow up on Councillor Hawkins' question, how much is the next funding round? Is it 30 million or...?
Sorry for the squeaking. With that, the government's allocated 90 million over the next three years, so generally works on it in your base of 30 million.
Thank you.
Councillor Lord? Sorry? Did you, did you have a question or do you have...
I'm just going to indicate a willingness to move.
Okay. So Jinti, I mean, sorry?
I was just going to move.
Okay, sorry. I've got to move on a second, thank you. You've got a question?
Yes, just further to Councillor Wiley's question about loss of park in a quiet street, have you looked at the option of actually increasing parking in a quiet street because you then have the possibility of angle parking because the car speed is lower? Have you looked at the possibility of, were you losing a couple of parks, picking them up again by angle?
That is feasible in some locations. Forbury Road is, it wouldn't be wide enough, but what we are looking at for Forbury Road is providing angled parking on Bedford Street and Albert Street, and the initial estimates are that we can get an additional, additional 15 spaces on Bedford Street and the same at least on Albert Street.
Are you going to have to do traffic calming in Bedford Street to achieve that? Because some cars get up here pretty quick.
I'm not sure of the exact details of that concept, it's still being developed.
Well, if I can help, certainly again, at the meetings, 100% of the people who attended wanted that traffic calming at that corner of Victoria Road, Bedford Street and Forbury Road for that very purpose that you just spoke about.
Okay, and my other question was of you, Councillor Wilson. You said earlier regarding the $570,000 media release, that it was good manners to publicly acknowledge that we had had received the money. Would it not also have been good manners to publicly acknowledge that after we had ostensibly made the decision? Could, could that not have been done after this meeting?
I think, I understand and I take on point of Mrs Stokes that it would have been nice if we'd, that the press release had said 'may' rather than 'will', but in the press release, but the process is the process that you get the money in. And I've done it with New Zealand Cycle Trails as well, and they like to see that you acknowledge the money.
Yes, but it doesn't have to be the next day, couldn't have been a week later, wouldn't the acknowledgement have been equally good manners? And then wouldn't it have been also good manners to us as ostensibly the decision-makers?
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
I've got to move, Councillor Lord, second to Jinti, Councillor McTavish. Any discussion? Lee?
I'm disappointed that we don't have a decision really to make here, and that we haven't been presented with any option, which is what I had hoped we should always have when it comes to making decisions around council table. Given that we don't have any option and that it's something we've had to complete, I just want to register my disappointment that, to me, there are more important things that we could have put this $570,000 to. I've suggested one, which is the real pinch point at Sawyers Bay, but to me, this appears to be a decision that's been made by others, and that we're just here to rock and stand. And for that reason, I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
Because I don't think we have a decision to make.
Thank you. Erin?
Thank you. I support this and will be voting for this, but, and as such, I'm grateful for, for the allocation of this funding.
of this funding. But I think more broadly than that, I don't think we should let a few more crumbs thrown at cycleway projects a month or so out from a general election. Take away from the fact that the transport ministry's budget for these projects is still in need of urgent redressing to meet the current and future needs of transport infrastructure in this country. So just a note from me that I hope our gratitude doesn't extend to stopping us from pushing central government to more closely align their strategic priorities with our own through the integrated transport strategy and others. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Would you like to write a reply? I'll put the motion on in favour, please, Aye?
Aye.
I'd like to abstain on the grounds that I don't believe that we have been given a decision to make.
Thank you. That brings us to notification, agenda items for consideration by the chair. Lee, I'm going to take up that suggestion about State Highway and Sawyers Bay cycleway. I can say that that's something I'll go back to you on. I know the NZTA are looking at it as part of their Port Chalas cycleway project. It is the area of difficulty. I understand finding the solution from discussions I've had with the NZTA, but I'll see if we can do an update on to notification for the chair if you're happy to deal with it that way.
That would be great. Could I just add that I've had several complaints now from cyclists who claim that that really is the scariest thing they ever have to do, where they have to wait for the traffic to stop going under the Sawyers Bay Bridge and then make a dash for it. I was thinking, having gone and had a look, that there is actually enough space on the footpath in between the barrier and the subman for cyclists to actually get through there physically without having to be on the road. And I'm wondering if, recognising that a permanent solution may be some time and a lot of money away, that some temporary way of allowing cyclists to get through that pinch point without actually having to risk a logging truck coming around the corner just could be arranged.
I'm happy to take that up, but that is an NZTA project which I don't think we could put urban cycleway money into anyway because it's an NZTA project. It's a state highway.
I appreciate you having a look.
Any other... Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Jean. Just, I've noticed and I'm sure others have as well, an upsurge in tagging in the central city and suburbs, which may or may not just relate to the school holidays. And I know some changes have happened internally in terms of hours for Keep Dunedin Beautiful being increased and so on because of their work there, but I'm wondering if we could have a brief report on council policy on tagging and graffiti, please? And our capacity to respond to...
Were you talking about on streets or were you talking about on private land?
Both. I'm talking about on our property, I'm talking about on public property, I'm talking about on private property. But I really want to know what the council policy is because I'm not sure there is one. And I'd like to know just a background information paper on what we are doing and what we can do so far by way of task force screen, something like that.
I'm more than happy to raise it, but I actually think it's heading in recognition of it. It's private property, so but it's something you and I might weave on together.
I'm not sure it is, but whatever, a report to our committee would be just delightful.
I'm sure that you can make that happen as well.
We don't need to file a bad cheque.
Jinti?
I'm just wondering, and it's something that Jean possibly is already canvassing, but just in relation to this cycleways funding, it strikes me that the government is, because they are focused on quick wins, are funding those projects which can be seen are very well progressed in terms of their development. I'm making some assumptions here, so start correcting if I'm wrong, but I wonder whether we have got sufficient resource applied at the development end of the equation or whether there's a piece of work that needs to be done to look at whether we front end some of the work that might happen over the subsequent year three, year two, year three, to ensure that we're maximising the opportunity.
I'm happy to, and Jean can answer some of that, we've probably slowed that work down to the extent that we've put it out of consultation now as part of annual plan, that what we process next. The other part of that is that I think we're just advertising at the moment for more resources in that area, which may help that process as well.
That's correct, councillor, that we are certainly reflecting on how things have gone over the last two and a half years and thinking about the next forward work programme, making sure we've got the right level of capacity and resource and skills to make sure that we do develop it in a robust manner. So I think we'll be in a stronger position, hopefully, if we can develop that plan in the next few months and see where that takes us as to how we might better deliver the programme.
Just briefly on the graffiti, just to confirm, obviously it's a multifaceted issue with many different options. So the trial whereby the councillors fund an extension of the Keep Dunedin Beautiful resource to provide some oversight and coordination of all the activities, both in-house through the task force screen but also across our various contractors, that's kicking off at the beginning of March and that will run for three months. So if I can suggest that if there is to be any report back, that obviously there's ourselves with public, there's the businesses, private assets, that we get the holistic view of the challenges and management issues associated with graffiti and we'd be in a better position to report on that at the conclusion of that trial, which will be in the middle of the year.
Any other matters? The meeting to close, thank you very much for your attendance.